Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meetings for Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city website and the city YouTube channel. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a quick please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Cockhill, Mrs. Gross.
Chair.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Six-member president.
Thank you. I would like, our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules of council state. The comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profoundly will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Uh, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Hoover, Amarillo, Texas. I'm Jean Warf, Global Intelligence Society, US National Candidate, President 2024. 412-969-7997 is my primary US telephone text number by appointment only. Media, please do not just show up without an appointment. You've been doing that is just not going to work. National and Global Intelligence Information Networks is what we use, what I founded two years ago. Also the founder in 2022 of Sex Gender Equality Nationwide Nexus, which is male female inclusionist, which is unlike, in our view, the sexist gender equity commission of Pittsburgh that is overwhelmingly male exclusionist, supported by equities in intersectionalists Gross, Strasburger, and Kail Smith. Concerns of council include racial identity, political empowerment, and infrastructure. One concern expressed repeatedly as a listed agenda item is monetary support of political empowerment groups recently for the yellow political empowerment group, especially East Asian US Americans. Yellowness like blackness is a subcultural information intelligence template for influencing political government policy. Oh, no, my mistake. The Pittsburgh City Council meeting agendas do not have yellow political empowerment group funding, not now, not ever. Is this anti-Asian? But oh, yeah, the Pittsburgh Council has repeatedly funded the black political empowerment group, not red, no brown, no white. How is that not racist? On this, in our view, my view, Pittsburgh City Council is racist. Mr. Ganey does not object. Another concern is infrastructure. In Yellow Bridge breaking down Pittsburgh, there are a number of bridges which are really in trouble, including Smithfield. I think we can learn, should learn, Mr. Ganey, councilors, from yellow infrastructure work. Yellow infrastructure achievement includes train connectivity at a very high level intra-genre, world fastest train plus in the top 10, five of them. The United States has none. And the inter-China-asian-to-Europe connectivity is unmatched from the Atlantic to the Pacific. It has the largest, most integrated national non-world financial linguistic connectivity via Bei Dou, which is the Chinese alternative to the GPS.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, we've also been joined online by Councilman O'Connor. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullin.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. We, the people of Bon Air, have significant investment into our properties. We stand to lose significant value financially and quality of life reduction. The largest investment that the average American will make is their home. Our biggest assets are being threatened. This is why we, as a community, have expressed significant concern about the potential development of Bon Air School into anything other than a green space. The Pittsburgh Public Schools needs to transfer Bon Air School to the city for $1. This will cut the losses of Pittsburgh Public Schools and be reparation to our community. The Bon Air School building needs to be torn down and a green space should be created. The Pennsylvania Constitution states, under political powers, that all power is inherent in the people and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Negligent infliction of emotional distress and blockbusting are being perpetrated by those who oppose our community. Real damages have occurred to the Bon Air community. I have no doubt that this controversy was the contributing factor to the demise of my husband. The Pittsburgh Public Schools created this controversy against we, the property owners of Bon Air. My husband did his duty to promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the people he served. Will you, as elected public servants, do your duty to help the people of Bon Air? My husband, Michael, was duty-bound his entire adult life. He completed his mission on earth well. He is now one of the watchers and helping in the spiritual realm. He is still a force with us. A neighbor wrote, "I think one of the best ways we will honor him is to keep fighting for Bon Air and be kind to our neighbors." We will commit to that, I promise. Shady trees, not shady deals. In Bon Air, Michael Mullin, Memorial Green State. Do your part. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, we've also been joined by Councilman Burgess, as well as Councilman Cockhill. Our next registered speaker is Ikahana Haumalkina.
Greetings and good day. In Lakayala King, my title is Ikahana Haumalkina. I am the Grand Inka to air Quasimbecus, the Aboriginal American people, also known as Indigenous Indians. I came before city council asking you to take action and create safe spaces throughout the city of Pittsburgh for Indigenous Americans, according to your own city charter, which is subordinate to the Pennsylvania Constitution, which is subordinate to the US Constitution, which states in Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed. As a teenager, I've always found the subject of history to be intriguing and extremely interesting and very important. So I made it my business to find out more about my own lineage and history. Since this careful orchestrated narrative taught in schools seemed so gloomy, dark, and grim for the people called Negro, Black, and Colored, because the history teaches that those people are only descendants of slaves, I found that very troubling. At the tender age of 14, I went to my grandmother to inquire about our story after a series of failed questions about slavery, turned up empty as she gently explained to me that I was not Black and that we were not Black and nor were we African-American. Instead, she told me that we were Indians. I was shocked. And she continued to explain our indigenous roots. Her father, a Cherokee Indian. Her mother, a Creole Indian. I was amazed and I was immediately excited, but also confused because the narrative taught in school didn't support that. And so after 20 or so odd years, I would never forget that conversation with my grandmother. So fast forward these 20 years of research and development, I have found the hidden truth, which shouldn't be a surprise to anyone who has the eyes to see the strategic erosion of our identity. It's okay for people to discover that perhaps they don't like the gender of the body they were born in. That seems to be acceptable. But when we use our voices to speak the truth, who we are, we shall not be denied our identity, our true identity. And so I speak with the voice of my ancestors, that you will do.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward now. You'll be given three minutes.
Hello. Hello, everyone. The council.
Just provide your name and neighborhood.
Yes. My name is Will Leslie Tate, and I'm here to speak for the people of Pittsburgh and the homeless. And I just feel like the city is not the same city I used to grow, that I grew up in. Because now that I'm here, I see that people don't support the people that's put it on, put it this way, on a lower level. And we need to look out for our people that's out there in this homeless. A lot of people are without identification, social security card, birth certificate, you know, what have you. And I just feel that we need to contribute more to the homeless around here. And the shelters are closing and people before they get their apartments. And people need, you know, they need shelter. And I'm one of them right now because I'm lacking my identification. And I do have a job pending in the mill. And I just feel like, you know, I'm having problems with vital statistics because they sent me, you know, my sister's son in for my birth certificate, and they gave me a wrong last name. And they say it's due to COVID and I'm having problems. Well, there's a lot of guys out there right now that's sleeping in the street because the Smithfield homeless shelter is closed. And I just feel like, you know, there's people who are out there that have substance abuse, and we need more outreach programs around here for these people. And also, uh, there's people that's just down on their luck and they need these support groups and things like that here in Pittsburgh. And we, it's just so much that's needed right now. And it's like people are walking around, driving around in their expensive cars, and people are walking past and paying these people no attention at all. And I think it's selfish and it's not right. And I just really would like Pittsburgh to come, we used to have a slogan here, "We are family." And I just think that right now, we're not acting like family. And we need to support each other more, and we need to take care of our people who are a little down on their luck right now. And I just thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Say we'll have our sergeant on to get some information from.
If we, if we have anyone else in chambers wishing to speak? Mr. Ludwig?
Good morning. My name is Les Ludwig. I'm Squirrel Hill. And what brings me into town this morning, downtown, is a question. And this is serious one. I haven't heard what the cost of annexation is. How would you finance it? If you're going to finance it, it's going to go up how many points by Federal Reserve? So why would we wait a year now that the good word is out? That the Federal Reserve is going to move against inflation? So there's something missing, and that's a business point of view. Has anyone sat with a pen and paper and really analyzed the numbers? I don't know. I came to raise the issue, and of course, I have to also ask if anything ever happened to the rubbish deal that I raised in giving a card to Mr. McColl. So thank you for your attention, and I hope that it'll bring an intense investigation where maybe we should reopen the entire question of annexation and not accept the fact that the decision was made with less than complete information. I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in Katy, the Irving's tires. That's at the top of the hill up from where the Civic Arena used to be. Now, I am thankful that Mr. The homeless, he's homeless. He's one of the homeless men that I told you, that had told me that they were closing the church, and they did. So you have where they have put the homeless men out. They have nowhere to sleep. They're sleeping on the, on the ground. I told him to come and address you, Mr. DeVeau, because that's your district, the downtown of the Hill District, downtown. And I told you, did you try to look and see where you could help these men in any kind of way? Did you try? You probably didn't. You haven't said anything to the community to let us know that you are responsible for that area. You have been given the job to help these people, and you should address him. You didn't even bother to even say, sir, can I have your name and information? Maybe you can call me later. See how he's saying that this is supposed to have been one of the most livable cities in the United States. That's what a lot of people say. But this is a tale of two cities. You have the city, whereas if you work with Mr. Lavelle on the north side, they have had meetings and meetings. And then one month, and I can't remember what year it was, that we were supposed to have a meeting, and she scheduled it on the Fourth of July. So that whole month, we didn't have a meeting for the Hill District, but they had three on the north side with Ms. Harris when she was still a council person. I also wanted to bring up that in the book, this is called, and it has an article, and you see the Black woman? Her name is M-A-R-I-T-Z-A. Middle name T-A-B-A-R-Z. That's the same Brown, same as mine. This is a woman that wanted to be an astronomer. She was having trouble in college, and they told her that she couldn't do it. But she was determined. So she transferred to York City's Hunter College. She got a bachelor's degree. She got a PhD in the properties of dark matter. She has been teaching in high schools. That's what most of the Black candidates do. They teach in high schools because in the colleges, they're not accepted. They don't get moved up as they should. Now, she's still teaching in high school to teach our young children, our young females or males. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Any further speakers, speaker, excuse me, with us in chambers and or line? Seeing none. Council President?
I just want to say, I'm going to thank Councilman Wilson for going over to help the gentleman who spoke earlier. But if anybody is in need, they can call 311, they can call 211, and they can get some services. They can call any one of our offices, and we'll be happy to help you, connect you to some, some help and services in the city of Pittsburgh. There's homeless shelters in Councilman Lavelle's district. There's other, a lot of resources in that area. And so we don't want anybody to suffer. And I want to thank Councilman Wilson for going over to help during this time. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. That moves us to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself, on the third paper, Bill 154.
Bill 154, Resolution authorizing the mayor and Department of Law and Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city in full and final settlement related to the litigation of the city of Pittsburgh versus Purdue Pharma in the US District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, initially as to the defendants, McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health, Inc., and AmerisourceBergman Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., OrthoMcNeil Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Janssen Pharmaceutical, Inc., and any further settling defendants to accept a yearly allocation of funds into a special revenue account to be subsequently created to accept the funds of this settlement as determined by Pennsylvania's intra-opioid trust and allocation order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose affirmative recommendation. And let the record reflect, Councilman Kraus has also joined. New papers, Bill 182.
Bill 182, Resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the city for public roadway purposes, certain property in the 10th Ward owned by Frank and Fira Arena, Chenelli, and/or their estates located along El Paso Street, and authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose affirmative recommendation. Bill 183.
Bill 183, Resolution authorizing an interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $175,000 from Computer Maintenance Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Computer Maintenance Department of Innovation and Performance for costs associated with computronics expansion for LED inspections.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 184.
Bill 184, Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II, Fiscal Article I Administration by adding a new chapter 220, Post-Ishuance Compliance Policies.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Could we, let's dip our toe in the water. Could we have discussion on this just briefly, please? Yes. Councilman Kraus? Yeah. Is there someone here, please, to speak to Bill 184? Leave. Oh, hi, hi.
Hey, good morning. Sure. I'm Jennifer Gula. I'm the Acting Director and Treasurer for the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Finance. This is basically a bit of housekeeping. So as part of the completion of the issuance of a tax-exempt bonds, we actually file an 8030AG to the IRS. And on that form, they always ask if we actually have a policy for, you know, making sure that we are in keeping with, in lines of the tax-exempt bonds. We have to make sure that we watch arbitrage, anything over, we have to give back to the IRS and so forth. We already do that. But this policy just outlines what our responsibilities are and who is responsible for them. So in following with the debt issuance policy, we just want to codify it for continuing.
Appreciate your professionalism.
Sure. You're welcome.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose affirmative recommendation. That takes us to invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
A move.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose invoices are approved. We need a motion to approve the P cards. Don't move.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. Our first recommitted paper is Bill 169.
Bill 169, Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor international trauma life support Pennsylvania in an amount not to exceed $6,600 for trauma and life support certifications necessary to the mission of the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, just, just briefly, our council solicitor did agree that warrant can be used. He talked to the law department. So thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank the councilman and the solicitor for working on it.
You. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 170.
Bill 170, Resolution amending Resolution 152, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended agreement or agreements with the National Association of State Voting Law Administrators for training and certification services regarding Department of Public Safety vote operations at a sum not to exceed $679,000 and provided for the payment of costs thereof.
Motion approved. Discussion.
Second.
I would like to actually make a motion to amend. This is a technical amendment that we had to recommit the bill from Public Safety. So motion to amend.
Second. Any discussion? See, on the amendment, where's the amendment? Oh, it's the, okay. I apologize. I haven't. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, the bill is amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 You oppose affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 185.
Bill 185, Resolution amending Resolution Number 12, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with the Poise Foundation at an overall cost not to exceed $2 million for services relating to violence prevention activities, $49,950 of which will compensate the Poise Foundation for its services, with the remaining $1,950,050 to be subcontracted by the Poise Foundation to other third-party entities in accordance with ordinance number 40 in Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Funds of the City of Pittsburgh Code.
Motion to approve.
Second with discussion.
Yeah.
Just, just, just briefly, talk to Public Safety. This is based on work with the Controller's Office in order to accept these funds. This was, I believe we already approved this prior, but that's, that's more a technical portion of the bill, but I'm open to discussion.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, follow up. President Smith? I apologize. I'm confused. We're accepting funds or we're expending funds? Go ahead, Councilman, please. We, so this, we've already approved these funds to be allocated to the Poise Foundation. This is essentially their administrative fee for providing, for servicing these funds that'll then be distributed to third service providers related to the Stop the Violence Initiative. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the administrative fee is the 49,950? Yes. Okay. Thank you. I'm good. Thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Madam President?
Do we have a list of who the providers are, who's receiving the funds?
No, that has not been determined yet.
So I want to, because I'd like to make sure that we know about it because I'm understanding that some of it's going to Reverend Grayson. Is this the same one?
No.
Different one? Please explain.
So we did two things. One, we had a contract that we sent dollars directly to both the Center that Cares, which is Reverend Grayson's initiative, or our Stop the Violence Initiative. This is the $2 million that was set aside to go to third, third-party providers, which will be community groups, faith-based organizations, youth-based organizations. It has not been determined who's going to receive these dollars. Poise Foundation is currently working on the actual application itself, which they have not released yet. Once they actually release it and have submissions, they will actually provide all that information to council members. So council members are fully aware of who's actually applying to receive these dollars.
So we're aware, but do we have a final vote on that?
We do not have a final vote. We will have input.
We'll have input.
Yes.
Well, it seems like we never have input as a body. Seems like you and Reverend have a lot of input, but it doesn't seem that the rest of us do. So I'd like to make sure, I'd like to call for a post-agenda. And actually, I'm going to call for one on all the violence intervention programs, and then we'll discuss what we need to have there at the table. But I do want to say that I think that, you know, I do see some of the things, and I know Reverend Grayson is doing some great work in Sheridan and with Christopher Ralph and some other people. So I do want to say, I appreciate the work that he's doing. I just want to know what else is going to be funded, how this is going to be funded, and that the money, the funds are distributed appropriately across the city, that, you know, groups that are actually doing work, not doing political work, but actually doing work, are actually receiving those dollars. And that there's actually a reduction in violence in the city from those dollars.
Yeah. And we will ensure that all council members are aware of who's potentially going to get funded. We're just not that far down the road.
Well, you know what? I want to be honest. Part of my concern is, I don't know, how does Cornell get paid? Because he does a lot of work. Cornell, does, how does he get paid?
He's also paid through our Stop, the Stop the Violence Initiative.
It was, it was brought to my attention from different people that worked with the programs, that they felt like he was not getting equal shares. So I think that's part of the conversation I want to have, and I should have that with you. an equal share. So I I think that's part of the conversation I want to have, and I should have that with you and Reverend, uh, separately. I'm good today, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Were you motion?
There a motion?
I'm gonna make, I made a motion.
Going to do it after.
Oh, oh, no, I don't have, I was just gonna respond. Well, you, you handled it. Or you gave the response I would give, yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. You oppose, bill is affirmative recommendation on Bill one eighty-five, Council President, do you want to make a motion before we move on?
Yeah, I want to make a motion for, um, a post agenda for anti-violence programming and funding.
Second.
Those in favor say aye. Uh, the President will work with the clerks to schedule that. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. First, first paper is Bill number twelve.
Bill twelve, ordinance amending and supplementing the city code at Title Six Conduct Article One, regulated rights and actions by adding a new chapter sixteen entitled prohibition on the use of certain bags and checkout bag charge to permit the use of only certain bags by retailer establishment at the point of sale or for a delivery and establishing a charge payable by the customer to the, to the establishment for the provision of other types of bags, all under certain terms and conditions.
Uh, motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, bill will be held one week. Bill sixty-five?
Bill sixty-five, resolution amending, resolution number eight sixty-three entitled
Yeah.
adopting and approving the twenty nineteen CDBG program by transferring remaining funds from the Jane Street Step Reconstruction Project to the North Side Christian Health Center, seventy-six thousand dollars, and traffic calming fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-four cents.
Uh, motion to hold one week.
Uh, the step reconstruction, se- second.
Thanks, Council. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, bill will be held one week. Bill one eighty-nine.
Bill one eighty-nine, resolution providing for an agreement with neighborhood allies to provide public engagement and citizen participation for the Community Development Block Grant Program in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Um, motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Uh, is there anyone here to speak to the bill in terms of what, um, is going to happen with these funds?
Hey, I'm Dave Hutchinson. I'm the Assistant Director for Capital and Asset Management with the Mayor's Office of Management and Budget. This is part of a legacy program the prior administration had set up with Neighborhood Allies um, to provide capacity building to individual citizens and CDCs in six priority, uh, clusters. One, uh, two are outside the city, so we don't pay for those, but I think they're Millvale, um, and Wilkinsburg. The other ones are the Hilltop, Larimer, um, Homewood, oh, blanking on the fourth one, I'm sorry. Um, but while I pull that up, they do resident change maker training and then try to provide capacity to CDCs specifically around, um, design and some of the citizen participation required for neighborhood plans and things like that.
Who are the CDCs?
I don't know if they have a specific list that they're working with this year yet, um, but we can get that if it comes up. Oh, Hill District's the fourth, the fourth cluster.
Okay, so they, yeah, I haven't, um, had the opportunity to meet with Neighborhood Allies yet. Um, since I've been in office, but I think I'm gonna reach out to them just to learn more about what they do. Um, so, yeah, um, do you have any other information on the those CDCs that they fund? Or that, so they're providing support for like what is the function of what they do?
Yeah, so from what I can tell from the scope, they, um, try to build capacities with the CDCs so that they can help participate in community-based design, things like park master plans or neighborhood, um, plans, things like that. And then they also do kind of individual training to, to individual residents, so that they can help advocate for their community as well.
So they, this is, so this money is for, um, current projects that are being done? Or this is to allocate for new projects that could come down online?
I was gonna say, please keep in mind, this is their two thousand nineteen funds, so they may already be expenses, um, from, from that program here.
We're just paying them back.
Yeah, they've been budgeted, um, previously, and now we're, we're getting through the contracting process.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 You oppose, bill is recommended, Bill one ninety.
Bill one ninety, resolution providing for the designation as a historic building under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, the certain site known as the Tito House located at eighteen seventeen Fifth Avenue and eighteen eighteen Coldwell Street in Uptown in the third ward in the city, the owners of the properties are opposed to the nomination.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I have a question. Who's the nominators? Just curious. Who's the nominators?
Yeah.
Uptown Partners.
Okay. Okay, uh, so. But that's a good point. Um, previously, so maybe with the transition with, um, departments recently, uh, I I did request for the nominators, or, you know, to who owns the property, and all that information to be on the bill. So we'll, we'll get that on there. Can we get that on there for the, as it continues? What's that?
Should be in the text.
Okay, yeah, but on the actual title of the bill, um, I'm requesting for all historic nominations uh, we've done in the past. Uh, usually the department sends it over. So I'm just saying, I'll work with the department to get that on the, on the bill. I like on the face of the bill, so we're clear on who owns the property and if they're opposed or not.
Noted.
Yeah, it's thought. It's a whole.
All right, so the bill will be held for a public hearing. That moves us to Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. First new paper is Bill one eighty-six.
Bill one eighty-six, resolution amending resolution number seven twenty-six, amending resolution number five forty-eight which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or agreement or amendment with AMCOM for the lease of the multifunction devices and the managed print services for a sum not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year for five years by extending the terms and increasing the not to exceed amount to three million four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, affirmative recommendation, Bill one eighty, one eighty-seven.
Bill one eighty-seven, resolution amending resolution number six forty-two, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Beyond Two Zero and Surewill to provide and implement an ITSM system to license, implement, manage, operate, and deliver IT services to meet the needs of the city at a sum not to exceed five hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty cent by increasing the not to exceed amount to one million one hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty cent.
Motion to approve.
Then, discussion?
Just brief discussion. I just, if you don't mind, I just think that we're getting a lot of big tickets, you know, items coming before us for, for, um, IMP. And so I just want to make sure that, before they come over, that we have maybe some kind of briefing or something from either the councilwoman or from the director about, uh, the necessity and, and just a little bit more. Because I mean, this is a little bit more complicated than us just, you know, knowing that paving is going to paving. This is a little bit more complicated. So I'd like to have some, some better explanation as they come forward. Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Council President, I'd be happy to. I get a briefing from, um, the director of IMP or the relevant person associated with the bill prior to every standing committee meeting. So I have notes in front of me for every single bill that's up in my committee. If you'd like to expand that to a larger group of people, I'd be happy to make that happen. Um, but if you'd also like me to speak to this particular bill in front of us, I can, or I can call the appropriate person up to the table.
Now, I'm good today. I just want to say, going forward, I think we're spending an awful lot on that, in that department. And I'd like to know what we're spending it on, and the necessity and something that helps it, helps us make it not only more understandable to us, but to the public. Um, I don't want to blindly just start saying yes to everything IMP sends, because we know how important, uh, technology is to our operations every day. I want to make sure that what we're spending is, is absolutely needed.
Sure, um, feel free to share with me the, the method in which you'd like to have that conveyed to you in the public.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill one eighty-eight.
Bill one eighty-eight, resolution authorizing the city to extend a contract agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Community Television for Public Access Services by extending the term of the agreement until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Question, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. Um, the city is extending this contract because the franchise agreement with Verizon is still in negotiation and not yet finalized. So this is an extension with PCTV until that, um, uh, franchise agreement is finalized.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, recommendation. That moves us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, want to fire a paper, Bill one sixty.
Bill one sixty, resolution adopting the Al Qasam Act five thirty-seven special study.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that if members have any questions, we do have representative from Al Qasam in the audience. Um, Jamie, you're back to somewhere. Sorry, there you go. It's okay, you can sit there. And, um, I also wanted to, um, thank, um, Councilman O'Connor for holding this bill um, for a few weeks and for Al Qasam, especially Ms. Clark, for helping arrange site visits um, on the Allegheny River sites, um, for the stakeholders that have been working to improve those river fronts for twenty years. Um, some of you are familiar with, for example, at the bottom of the zoo parking lot how, uh, former Councilman Jim Furlough and then State Senator Jim Furlough worked for twenty years to replace a section of Butler Street that no one even realized was a bridge, because it had been landfilled in forty feet over decades um, and was level, but, um, he was able to champion getting it excavated back down so that all of those neighborhoods up on our plateau could get under Butler Street and have river access. Now, you still can't get river access there right now. It's very steep. There's no kind of built-out, um, riverfront access. Um, but this has been going on now more than twenty years, actually started under, you know, Mayor Tom Murphy trying to advocate that we have access from our neighborhoods to our river fronts, cleaning up the waterways, cleaning up the riverfront. This is that giant, giant federal, federally court-ordered Environmental Protection Agency project that is just beginning now in front of us, where the Al Qasam will be building eighteen-foot diameter, I think I've said that right this time, um, tunnels under our rivers. Um, and they will be a hundred and fifty feet deep. Um, but those access points will be on our river edges. And so I had, I have four sites, uh, one at Thirty-second Street, one at Forty-eighth Street um, in Lawrenceville, one, um, at the bottom of the zoo parking lot, at the butt, which is the A forty-one sewer shed. And one at the bottom of Washington Boulevard, which is the A forty-two sewer shed, right on our, our district line, Councilman. And, um, so we convened the Negli Run Watershed people and the Zoo people and the Riverlife people and riverfront people, neighborhood people um, and gathered to see what these construction sites would look like. These, in my district, are many years out still, six, seven years out. But they will be at least a half acre in size and, um, the construction will last for eighteen months to two years each. Um, and then, and then what happens, right? And then we'll have possibly some, um, sites, um, these rivers' edges that cannot be built on top of um, at these sites. So we convened to see what that might look like. Um, and it's just at twenty percent engineering is what I'm told, so that it's still many years out from, from greater detail than what I presented, but um, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them for making the space, making the time, and being patient with us and having four or five engineers on site to answer all of the questions. Because again, these are, these are projects that need, the neighborhoods have been, the citizens have been organizing about from way before I even served on council, before I was even, um, elected eight years ago. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, and to thank them for taking that time.
Mr. Chair?
Members have questions. Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, Councilman. If other members have questions, like I said, we do have representatives from Al Qasam in the room. We had a briefing on it, I think, at late January, is when the council briefing was, on all the stuff I just said.
Thank you, Councilman O'Connor. Follow up, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, Councilwoman Gross for setting up those neighborhood meetings, you know, glad to hold so that this information can be out there. Thank the crew from Al Qasam for being there. And also Councilman Wilson and I have had conversations, because his area is going to be probably affected first when these projects start. And that he has a line of communication with Al Qasam as well going down in the future to organize some of those meetings, as Councilwoman Gross did. But as Councilwoman mentioned, this is only twenty percent, so we'll be seeing this a lot over the years, uh, come back to council. So just thank everybody for the support and attending the briefings as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, um, I'd like, uh, I'd like to have, uh, Jean Clark come to the stands. Or you can come here. You want to stay here? Yeah, come join us.
Join us, Jean.
No call.
You would give us your name?
I'm Jean Clark. I am Director of Governmental Affairs at the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, which we all know and love as Al Qasam. And I'm here to answer any questions anybody have about this five thirty-seven special study and our plans moving forward.
Well, well, thanks. Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
I wanted to, uh, just, just ask, um, I, it's, it's helpful to hear Councilwoman Gross and, and, you know, the sites. So this twenty percent, um, were, were those sites, um, the ones you discussed in, in the, uh, in the Lawrenceville meetings and everything?
Right, and the sites, to a great extent, are determined by where the overflows are. You can't move the water a different way. We have to pick it up at the overflows. So in many cases, there, there are falls there.
So how many sites do I have, um, in, in this twenty percent? What's that? Okay.
Okay, the entire system is at twenty percent. We had to, we had to file with the federal and state government a basis of design study. And that was where we got to the twenty percent. We now have the Ohio River Designer. We have just hired them and, and started giving them the notice to proceed. They're at about thirty percent on the Ohio River Tunnel. That's a long time before they.
Thirty percent of engineering?
Yeah, thirty.
I've been asked to.
Yeah.
We're kind of talking, so I don't mind some interrogatory. So you're, you're saying the question is, what percent of engineering has been done on each site?
Right, so we, the Allegheny River Tunnel, that we share on that side, right? So you're on the north side of it, and I'm on the south side. Um, that one is the farthest out, will be the last one. And so the amount of specificity is only at twenty percent of what the sites will look like and, and that, you know, what the construction will look like. But the tunnel that will be under the Ohio River will happen first, and so they're farther along in the designs.
So, so today we're voting on the twenty percent of engineering?
What we are asking for today is to support this project based on the information we had when we presented it to you, which was a twenty percent design as part of the, the, for the study we've already submitted to the federal state government. Um, we are in the process. We've just hired the Ohio River Tunnel Designer and gotten started. And we are meeting with them on a weekly basis. I would be happy to go out with you, uh, with your community or just keep you on, on a, an information list on weekly, monthly would probably be better uh, to let you know if we are coming up with any changes. Uh, and, and things may change. The difference is, the outfalls are always going to be where the outfalls are.
So here's my thing with this project. I don't understand, um, what the public process is that you're required to do.
Okay, we're having a public meeting next week, or two public meetings on the thirtieth about this, this project.
Where's that at?
That's going to be at Al Qasam. It's virtual.
Okay.
Um, one at ten AM on the thirtieth, one at seven PM on the thirtieth.
In that meeting, you're going to go over everything that you went over with us in the briefing?
Yes, yeah. We felt it was important to talk to the elected officials first as a matter of respect, as well as you're the ones that vote. But in addition, you know, as we talked to municipality leaders throughout the region, we asked them to help us reach out to their communities.
But by law, you're not required to do any sort of public meetings?
We are required to do a public meeting for this study.
Okay.
We have specific public meetings that, that were required to do throughout the Clean Water Plan. And they have to be at certain times when certain information is available. That said, I am willing to come at any time, bring you the most, most up to date information. And this, this goes for everybody.
Yeah, I, I just wish, I wish, I wish it was a more, what I, the map I saw, I want my whole district to see.
Sure.
I want all the neighborhood groups to see. And I want there to be, you know, I mean, we're under, we're under the gun to do this by the federal government.
Right.
So people need to understand that. But the map I've seen, the conversations I've had, has really, you know, opened my eyes to know, like, just that I'm the only one that knows it. And I'm starting to tell people about it. And they're like, well, how do we get, you know, so?
So we're going to be-
I like, I like to see a public process build around the sites, what community groups, Alcasan should reach out to. I mean, Alcasan, I believe they have the capacity to organize this and to, and to fully execute a public process that we can't stop, but we need to at least let everyone know what's happening and where, where the drilling is, is going to take place. Because I mean, I have a, I have a launch site.
Right.
Well, a major launch site that will be there until two thousand and thirty-six.
Right.
One of the drillers that's sixteen feet in diameter.
Yeah.
Will be there onsite.
The torrenting machine, yes.
Yeah. So people are very surprised whenever I talk about this.
Right.
And I'm wondering, you know, with the, and it's like, I'm going to say, I'm like, what the, you know, what are they going to do to make the public feel comfortable with what's going to happen?
I've actually been in the process this past month in re-envisioning how that public process, and I work with the Director of Communications also, so we work across divisions as well as with all the engineers. And of course, everything gets signed off by our letter, Scott Williams. But we're, we're looking to be, have a more robust outreach process to the communities. Now, what we're hoping is that the elected officials who represent those communities can help us in determining who to talk to, where to hold the meetings, if they're, if they're in person. And, and how, and, you know, we're not asking you to speak for us, just advise us about what you know.
So if we don't pass this today, what happens?
We will still have the public meeting next week. But we, and we have some other outstanding municipalities that are in the process of adopting this resolution. But failing to adopt this resolution means we will not be able to get, looking down the road, permits to do the work.
Is there any case, so if we pass this and then we go for the public process, is there any case where the public shows up and you all are in agreement and, and they identify and you identify that there is an issue with the site and that the site can be changed?
We intend to meet with everybody as we move forward. Remember, construction doesn't start, design is right now. But construction doesn't start until tw- mid two thousand and twenty-eight. Between now and then, as we get more design information, we will be meeting with communities because we want to make sure that we are interrupting as little as possible, providing as much value as possible. And the other thing we're going to be talking to every community about is, what would you like this to look like when we're done? We will probably have half an acre that we will need to have access to shafts and to the deep tunnels. But other than that, I mean, we, when we gave you this, we had pictures of various places, how they've done it in the past. We're talking to, you know, some communities have already started saying, well, we want this, we want that. And, and we have to be aware of that this is ratepayer money that we're using. So we can't use it for something that's not at all connected to sewers. But for instance, I see Councilwoman Strasburger is, is on. We worked with her to develop the sewage war, the sewage reconstruction and green infrastructure underneath. And then she was able to find another money for Whitman Park, if I'm explaining this properly, Councilwoman. And, you know, we think that that's a great model. And we can help people look for money. One of the people in my office is, works with municipalities to help find funding for various different projects. I'm in-
You're talking about the stormwater projects?
Well, the stormwater projects, we're providing funding already to municipalities, to municipalities through our grow program. We've already used, granted sixty million dollars to communities for about close to a hundred and eighty, I think, source reduction projects. And we're going to continue to do that. But we also on, we call them green leaf behinds. We want to, do people want just, they want a trail? And so then how can we make, make, how can we communicate with the people who are working on the trail to make sure what we do helps them? If people want a ball field, you know, we will talk to them and we will make sure again that what we do helps them get that ball field.
Okay. So I want to wrap up here. So basically, this move forward today, there's still an option for the public to come and-
Oh, yeah.
Disagree with a site.
Absolutely.
To say like, and to make it, you know, to take, you know, someone, if a community group wants to, you know, collectively say this, we need to figure something out for a site, there's still an option to move.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So how will we, so how will we go forward that, but like, I think what you're asking is for me just to coordinate with, with different community groups that will be affected. Happy to do that. Is there some more formal process that we can, that we can?
I'm designing a formal process now because of the success we had with, with Councilwoman Gross and how she's been spreading the word to other people across the county. But, and we will have a formal process, a way, a way for us to schedule it, to answer the questions, you know, ahead of time, to know what people will expect to hear so that it's not just like the same old, same old. And, oh.
So how many sites, because on the north side, how many sites do I have? May have far more than four or five.
There's ten with the Ohio River Tunnel, again, those are all overflow sites.
Yeah. So ten, when I saw that, it was kind of daunting to me to think about, it's up to each individual councilperson to do that. So I'd like to-
Just point us in the direction of the people we need to speak with. We can take it from there if you know who's asking you questions.
Let's break it down into each individual site. We'll, we'll talk about each individual site and then tie that to the community that will be affected.
And we're doing other projects with the Army Corps. We're, we're about to start with trying to alleviate some of the problems with Spring Garden. The, that stream is in the system, which is very bad for the system, not to mention how bad it is for the people who have to deal with that overflowing. And so we're working with the Army Corps to, to try to fix that in advance of the tunnels be, because the tunnel will take away a lot of that problem. But if we can help people now, we're trying to figure out how we can do it.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming to council and I'm looking forward to this public process so people can understand, you know, each site.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Hi, Jean. How are you? I'm sorry, I can't be there with you in person today. I really just wanted to echo what Councilman Wilson was saying. So even though I understand District Eight and many of the council districts won't physically touch this infrastructure project, it's such a massive infrastructure project, probably more money than we're spending on anything else in the next few decades, that I really do want to make sure that the public is well informed on it. And so I was glad to hear that you were willing to work with council members. I mean, in, in a place like, you know, the East End, maybe, but it doesn't touch the rivers, maybe it makes more sense to just do an overall, you know, district-wide town hall with Alcasan on this project and, you know, other similar types of projects. And, you know, updates on the ways that Alcasan has helped some of the green infrastructure projects. Thank you again for all of that funding and also technical assistance in some places like Whitman Park and the Maryland Avenue Project and Shadyside and Chatham University's project. But, you know, maybe we can brainstorm on that. But I did want to just also say that I think that outside of the direct area impacted, it makes sense to probably inform the public on this just massive infrastructure project.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else for first round? If not, Councilman Kaku?
Yeah, just, just real quickly, Jean, and I'm sorry, my ignorance on this, I, you know, it's not in my district. I, of course, will support the members and with directives that, you know, they need to go by. Councilwoman Gross, you said a hundred and fifty feet below, that's how far down we're going. Is it going to be under the river? Is that right? And it's not going through the neighborhood, you're not digging up the neighborhood where it exits.
We will use a tunnel boring machine, which is similar to how they built the tunnel.
Right.
A tunnel for the Port Authority, but ours will be bigger probably.
And we're-
I don't know about the size.
We are transporting wastewater, water through, okay, right.
We are going to, we have a system already that has tunnels and is built to take all dry weather flow, which means no stormwater at all.
Right.
We have capacity there, but we cannot control whenever the, the stormwater, like today, you probably got in here before the rain hit. But, you know, stormwater mixed with sewage, because so many of our communities, and particularly the most of the city of Pittsburgh, are combined systems. So that means everything goes in one pipe.
Right.
So what we're doing is we are building near-surface facilities where the outfalls are that will redirect when the, the stormwater mixed with sewage comes through to a lower tunnel that will be deeper than the tunnels we already have. That tunnel will connect to an additional pump station at the, at the plant. And we are expand, we're doubling everything at the plant as well as building these tunnels. So we're going to be able to go from treating eight, or two hundred and fifty million gallons a day to six hundred million gallons a day with this system when it's all together. That pump station will operate only when there's wet weather that has gone into the, into the deep tunnel. And in many cases, it'll operate during the storm.
So the pump station's underground?
This pump station is at the plant. It's not underground.
I see. Right, right, right. And this is federally required?
Yes. This is the modified consent decree that was entered into federal court and approved in May of last year.
And none of it starts until twenty-eight?
We're actually, we've been working on it the whole time.
No, I mean, actual-
That construction.
Equipment there and, yeah.
Construction. Now, you're going to see us, because we're also taking over large, multi-municipal pipe, pipes that our, our municipalities are turning over to us. So we will maintain those and, and we're also built, working in different projects with our municipalities. We have sixty million dollars worth of projects out there that the municipalities are being reimbursed for to reduce the source.
Is there, is there a number on the, on the project that we're speaking about today? Is there a total number?
Billion dollars.
Billion, I thought it might be.
In twenty, in twenty-ten dollars.
Okay, good, good. That's it, Jean. I just was trying to get a grasp of still what was going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Brief, certainly I support, I support the project. Probably now, it's been twenty-some years, twenty-two, twenty-three years, something like that, when I first learned of this.
Yes.
When I was a member of the Board of Health. And we oversaw the consent decree with PWSA. And I tell the story, it's true. I was at a board meeting. My son then was in grade school and wanted to be a psychologist. In grade school, he used to read the General Black Psychology. He wanted to be a, my oldest son Ricky wanted to be a psychologist. But he had perfect math scores. So I'm sitting there, he's in eighth grade. And there's this debate, a debate discussion on the board of the consent decree. And they came in twenty-some years ago and said that we were going to have to change our combined sewer system, right? And that this would be the largest investment in the history of our region. This was probably twenty-four years ago. Now, I never understood it completely then. But that day, I went home and I looked at my son and I said, you are not going to be a psychologist, you're going to be an engineer. And he became a water engineer. That's a true story. It was the, this event is what convinced me to convince him-
Right.
Become a water engineer.
Right.
Thank you. Second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So just to recap, I, we had, I just looked up on my calendar. We had the briefing for council members from Alcasan on February eighth is when I had the District Seven one. And I think there were some other members in the room or staff. And I thought this, this to myself, we need to be sure that our residents in the city of Pittsburgh know about this project. We need to be sure they understand how big it is. They need to understand what the federal regulations and court orders are. We've been talking about this the whole time I've been on council, as something that was going to happen someday. And we're at that day, right? It, it is actually happening now. It has been ordered by the federal courts. And so, but how it happens is still within our jurisdiction and abilities to negotiate with Alcasan. And that's where we are today. So if members need more time to do more public process, I think we can negotiate that with Alcasan here as well, right? So our passing this resolution allows them to move forward. Now, we obviously are not going to hold it up twenty years more. But if other members want to have that communicating between their citizens and Alcasan, we do have the power to hold this longer. In February eighth, when I got my briefing and saw the magnitude of the impact from my district, I asked Councilwoman O'Connor to not put it on the table for a few weeks because the bill had not been introduced. And he did put it on the table. Two weeks ago, we've held it for one week at a time, twice, I believe, in order. So I finished my site visits last week. I had one the previous week and then one last week. For the, one was in the lower part of my district strip in Lawrenceville. And then last week, we did the upper river sections in Highland Park and at Washington Boulevard. But if other members want to have those discussions before passing this, I'm open if they're comfortable passing this today and then convening the kinds of meetings that we've had in District Seven. I'm happy to do that, too. I will continue to work to spread the information in my district because what we focused on for the site visits were the kind of key stakeholders who've been working on the issues for, again, several decades. But it's still a great deal more work to do to spread it out to the, to the general resident, I think. But I think one of the things we didn't get detail from, Jamie, you said that you were working on a more robust communications plan, which I appreciate. But there still is a schedule that you were hoping to close, by which you wanted to close public comment. So could you give us that?
The, the schedule, the requirements by DEP are that we hold the public meeting and then the public has thirty days to comment. And institutions like SPC have sixty days to comment. We are, I mean, we're very driven by timelines because of the, the extent to which they're dictated in the Clean Water Plan. So we hope to get all the comments and deliver everything by late spring to DEP. So they can then go through the study and start giving us, while we're working on the design, et cetera, et cetera, start granting us permits to proceed. Because the way the consent decree works is if we don't stay on time, and this is not time that's been dictated by us, this is time that has been dictated by the agencies in the negotiations, we'll, we'll, we will have fines and we will have problems getting the rivers as clean as- we'll, we will have fines and we will have problems getting the rivers as clean as we can, as fast as we can. And that is really our goal. Our goal is to reduce sewage pollution in the rivers from an average of nine billion gallons a year to with this portion of the plan, because there'll be another one after 2036, to re, this will reduce it to under three billion. And it will eliminate them in sensitive areas like boat launches, recreation areas, et cetera. So we're going to actually eliminate some of these 70-year-old overflows that we have been living with, that have been impacting people's ability to use the rivers. So I would hope that we could get this, this passed today so that we could stay on that schedule. And notwithstanding that, I will go anywhere, I will do anything. If you want me to meet tonight with somebody, I'm ready to do it. But I do, would like to have finished doing the plan before I do that.
Just, Clark, if you could please just repeat that kind of, the, the parts you said at the beginning, because I know I didn't write it down. So if we, when we pass this now, and actually you're going to, you said you were going to start your public, Alcoasand Public Comment Period, one way or another, even if we don't. So that commences, I don't think you said, you, you had a public hearing at Alcoasand?
It's on the 30th, March 30th, at 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. It will be on YouTube, on our website. If you want to comment during the meeting, just send an email to publicrelations@public-relations, I think it is, at alcosan.org. This is all on our website and you'll be granted access for, for comments and questions.
Their deadline for?
The 29th at noon.
So send it by the.
For the meeting itself. We'll also respond, people will be able to chat.
I'd, I'd like to get that date and time.
Okay. Deadline for making comments at the meeting is noon on the 29th of March. Just send an email, and this is all detailed on our website. And anyone who puts a comment in the chat who's not pre-registered, we will respond to every one of those comments. That will also, we'll also be explaining to people how they can get comments to us about the plan. The plan, we, when we brought the draft plan to you, we did get, in February, we did get comments, so we have updated that. They are being shipped out right now to the municipalities, the nine municipalities who touch the the, the tunnels, who the tunnels touch, I guess it is, plus to a number of agencies, to the mayor's office and to a number of libraries. So we are going to be publishing all the places, and it will be, it's already online on our website.
All right, but I still have the floor, so I'm just doing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're doing interrogatory with me.
Oh, okay.
And so you're, you're mailing those out now. And today is the 23rd. But the public meeting for which citizens are to respond has a registration deadline of March 29th. So are you saying that the municipalities have not yet received? We've received ours. I got my briefing on February 8th. But, so the public, your only public outreach for your public input, if I'm just wanting to make sure I've gotten this correct, is that you've mailed the, one of, a sample of the plans that you can have, going to help us for a second?
This is just a cheat sheet.
So it's just, this is one of the cheat sheets, but it looked like this, what we got in our briefing on February 8th. So I emailed it around because I had an email copy from you, and I emailed it around against the stakeholders and the community organizations. But you're saying that that's the extent of your outreach?
No, no.
Tell us about that.
Yes. Now, we've been doing outreach all the way through with, again, starting with our elected officials, because we think you deserve to know first. The March 30th public meeting is not the end of public comment. That's the beginning of public comment. There will be 30 days. By that, by the end of the week, we will have the full, for people who don't have access to internet, we will have, have the full plan, which is about this thick, at municipal offices, at libraries, and we're going to have it out to a whole lot of places, places, both public and private, where people can go see it. In addition, we are going to be publicizing how, for the next 30 days, how you can send in comments. We're, we're publicizing on, first off, we've just sent an email to the, to our entire list of individuals who have ever contacted us in the past seven years on anything. If we have their email, they got an email about this, including the link to where the, the study is on our, on our site. We're also doing ads, both electronic and print. And, and we are trying to reach out to everybody we possibly can. But this information is coming together quickly because we had a draft in February. We went out to municipalities, they, and, and planning agencies, and they gave us changes. We incorporated those, printed it, and we've printed it again, and now we're mailing it out again. And I could tell you that.
May I?
I'm sorry.
So you said that you presented it to planning agencies in the eight municipalities in February, and you've got feedback? Did you get feedback from the city?
We haven't.
Planning agency?
We have been in discussions with the Pittsburgh Planning Department, and where not all of, all the municipalities have separate planning departments.
We're probably the only one at this phase of the study because the others are boroughs?
Some are townships.
Okay.
Yeah. But, and we have presented in, in public meetings in those municipalities, from West Homestead to Aspen Wall and every place in between. So we are, you know, truly trying to, to, we're looking at how much more we can reach out and always trying to add to that.
Great. So I think one of the things that I would like to request, Madam Clerk, the studies that were emailed to council members and presented in the briefing, I would like to have them brought forward and attached to the legislation.
Sure.
What exists on today, on Legistar today for today's text file is only one piece of paper, which is just the resolution language. But when we do zoning, and this is an amendment to the city's sewer plan. So sometimes in our packets, when there's even been a small amendment, like a, a new half-mile added in some outlying township that's not even in the city of Pittsburgh, but still has ramifications for our sewer plan, and it has come before City Council for a vote, there's been a very extensive packet attached to that resolution that, that has the maps, for example, that has some of the more technical engineering language. And so Madam Clerk can attach that to this bill so that it is available to citizens. When you go to Legistar and you were to click on Build 20220160, right now, there's, it's not, there are no details in the sewer module, but, or on, on the, on that resolution. But if we can attach all of the specific packets for the specific districts and the overall Act 537 Special Study Information Package, that'd be great.
We will send with, with your permission to the clerk today. The updated study that is now on our website, along with a companion document that we did to that study. We will also send the documents we sent to you in February that were different by each district, delineating what your involvement was going to be. And that I hope would take care of what you need.
All of the technical documents that are relevant to the Act 537 Special Study in our measures, Wet Weather Plan, that would be that this resolution language says that we're okay with, right? So our citizens need to see what we're saying we are okay with, moving forward with. And right now, they cannot see that.
And I'm, I'm happy to do it, especially electronically, because I've tried not to kill too many trees.
Be very helpful. That's how we do it as well. And so we can do that, and you committed to each council member here that you would work with them on any kind of town halls or special outreach. We also have the option as a council for doing our own post-agenda and more study or hearing on the matter so that we can, again, amplify it, make sure that there's a chance for questions and answers to be done. But you're saying 30 days is your deadline for input, that the clock starts on March 30th and continues for 30 days and then moves on to DEP?
30 days is the DEP requirement for, for comments?
How long is your Alcoasand Public Comment Period?
Public comment is for 30 days. Agency comment is for 60 days.
Okay, so I think I'm confused already.
We're following, we are, we have to follow the DEP.
I thought you said it, it brought up that last time. I thought you said your Alcoasand comment period was 30 days and DEP was 60, but.
No, the other agencies, like SPC, get 60 days to respond.
Okay. But you, so you will close comment to the citizens after 30 days.
Right.
But you will keep it open for agencies for an additional 30. Did I say it right that time?
I believe so.
Okay. Everyone confirming? Yes, okay. Got it, got it. I just think, we just want to be clear in what we're saying here.
Right.
And I hadn't been able to.
Right.
Get that timeline in, on my own notes, so I appreciate that. So I, I think we've got support here to pass this one today, but we will get more of the documents attached so that citizens at home can find that information, see what it impacts, reach out with any questions. You, could you repeat the Alcoasand website for them?
W-W-W-Alcoasand, A-L-C-O-S-A-N dot O-R-G.
And that's straightforward, Alcoasand.org. And then they will be able to register the comments or register for the actual public hearing, which is on, the Alcoasand hearing, which is on March 30th. Right. Thank you for your patience. That's all I have.
Thank you for your patience with me.
Thank you. I've got President Smith, all about Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross. She's always, really does a lot with this, even the subject that not, not many of us like to talk about, but she likes talking about. But I do want to say this has been 20 years in the making in that we have had briefings and post-agendas and, and opportunities before, during budget hearings to talk about a lot of this stuff. And you also come before, you'll also come for permits in the future.
Right.
And if there's some issues, we can work on, you know, holding permits or, or talking about that, that whole process. So I'm, I'm okay today, but I do think that, that moving forward, if we have any, Alcoasand has always been great to work with for me, and I think many of us have been very responsive. So I just want to say thank you, and, and I'm good today. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the topic of eminent domain and the powers that you all have.
Right.
During this time, if you could explain that.
Sure. We, we do have eminent domain ability. We always try not to use it, but to negotiate either easements or purchases with, with property owners. The property we need is dictated by where the outfalls are to a great extent, or where the design says we have to, you know, have an, an added or another, another facility. So we have been very reluctant. We have been negotiating with, with property owners along the, where we know we're going to have to have have property right now. We are also working with Riverlife. We have a memorandum of understanding with Riverlife on that, both to help one another get our agendas.
But who gives you, can you explain that process? Like, the federal government gave you the power?
I believe it's through the Municipal Authorities Act, which is the primary governing body, governing law for Alcoasand. If it's different, I will check with the lawyers as soon as I get back and I.
Yeah, I just want to be transparent with that because they, you know, the dog on the map doesn't.
Right.
That can move as you.
Yeah, I mean.
To pass 20%, you know?
Right.
I'm just saying, like, there could be parcels that.
Right.
You know, you're looking at that you could move and then, so you're trying to strike the deal with the, with the owners currently.
Right, right.
For the lease agreement.
Right.
Then if that doesn't work out.
Right.
There, there would be.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole process we have to go through.
Okay.
In order to do that, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Karko?
Jean, this is really unrelated to the project. I just want to see if you know anything about it. We were having a conversation, I think you and I were having a conversation a week or two ago. Do you know anything about, a long time ago, I want to say 10 years ago or so, the state came up with a rule that you have to direct your water outside of your combined sewer system? And just being that you're in the business?
Yes, yeah.
So, so do you know anything about that?
You're in the business.
I am, right? That's why I'm curious. I'm trying to figure it out because I know a lot of boroughs, townships saying, oh, we can't, even the city of Pittsburgh. And this is what I'm unclear about, is the city of Pittsburgh, do, do they?
I believe you're talking about the portion of the city that is actually separated already. So you can't let your roof leaders go into the system because that adds stormwater to it. And unfortunately, it does cause, you know, financial impact. It frankly is one of the reasons we didn't, when we, way back in the day, when we were looking at the various ways we could fix this, one was, one was briefly considered was make everybody separate. And the kind of economic disaster that would create in, in the city particularly, you know, we just like put our pencils down and.
Economic disaster.
At this, you're in the, because you're in that area, your, your folks have to separate, and there are a number of ways to do that. And I know that Senator Wayne Fontana has been working on this for a long time, trying to figure out a way to provide some money for individual homeowners to do those separations.
Yeah. So you know, Jean, it causes other problems with flooding and different things that. I don't, I don't want to get off subject. I just curious to see, do you know, is it allowed in the city of Pittsburgh or is it not?
If you're in a separated community, your water off of your property, you have two, you have two pipes. You have a pipe that carries sewage and a pipe that carries stormwater.
Combined.
Right. Most people have one pipe. You have two pipes in that area. So your, every.
Areas that are combined, you're two.
You're fine, right? As of now. Right? But if, but you've got separated, I think probably in Brookline area, maybe Beachview. I'm not quite sure exactly where the lines are, but they have to have their stormwater go to that stormwater pipe and not go into the pipe that leaves their property with sewage.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. You still don't know what to tell a homeowner, but that's okay.
Thank you. Just real briefly, because I mentioned it in a community meeting, one of the sites that I believe is going to be affected is in the Chateau area.
Right.
And given that we're also planning a major development in that city, I told the Millcraft at MCC that you probably need to be having a conversation sooner than later.
Sure.
About trying to coordinate all of that because you're going to have major infrastructure needing to take place on the site. The city's looking at switching, reversing roads. So it makes sense for us all to collectively get on the same page. I've mentioned it to them, I figured since you're here, I'll mention it.
And we, again, our engineers are meeting with other developers along rivers. We're more than happy to meet with anybody and actually try to see if there's a way that we can maybe build some things earlier than the project would, would occur so that they don't have to dig twice.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you also very much, and you're going to get really tired of seeing me.
That takes us.
You already are.
Takes us to our new papers, Bill 180.
Bill 180, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision of the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for UPMC Presbyterian 3701 Fifth Avenue.
Motion to approve a brief discussion. I'm embarrassed that I don't know which council member represents this section of Oakland because it's all chopped up there. I asked, you said no. Councilwoman Strausberger, is it you?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Was this, is this the site that was just at Planning Commission yesterday?
I believe so.
So it did, and it, the news said it got its approval. I'm sorry for the inter. So it did, and it, the news said it got its approval. I'm sorry for the interrogatory, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. The, the news said it got its approvals, but I just want to call attention to what I keep saying is that our sewer modules are hitting our council agendas not in the correct sequence. This is a very, very large project. I'll defer to your more close-hand knowledge of it, Councilwoman. Do you believe we're ready to pass the sewer module?
Now, I would be happy to hold for at least a week to learn more, for all of us to learn more, for me to learn more, not just about the sewer module, but, and the planning commission approval, but the project as a whole.
Thank you. Okay, I'll just motion to hold one week then.
This is, what is this?
For the new UPMC hospital.
On the, on the children's site. It was just at Planning Commission yesterday.
So, well, there was a motion to hold for one week. Is there a second?
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Burgess?
So this is the new hospital that's going to be about two billion dollars rebuilding in Oakland. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, some
Believe that's what we're talking about.
And it'll be especially hospital that we should absolutely build. And I still think that major nonprofits, we have the resources to build on the front end of two billion dollar building or massive buildings of this size with, who have the capital to do it, probably have capital resources to share with the city to build bridges and roads throughout our city. And so I will be interested in hoping that they partner as they expand their business model and reap billions of dollars multi, I think, in the news yesterday. Another one of our major nonprofits talked about its, its, its revenues, its extra revenues, that it will be a good partner. And in, which I hope is power agreements voluntarily give to our city so that we can fix our bridges, our roads, our infrastructure, so that the residents and the staff and the doctors do not have to worry about falling off of a bridge or the bridge collapsing on their way to the doctors. Because the prognosis of a passenger on a bridge that collapses, trust me, is going to be worse than almost any other disease they could possibly have. So certainly support the hold and look forward to learning more about this project and its forecast of expense versus its forecast for income. And, and sure, look forward to that conversation.
Thank you. Since you went down that road, it's also just worth noting that the new hospital will absolutely be of service to residents of the city of Pittsburgh. It will also be of service to residents of West Mullen County, all the surrounding areas, and even those who come from out of state to benefit from this world-class institution, all of which provides no revenue to the city of Pittsburgh to take on that additional traffic that will come into our city. Why, to your point, nonprofits need to provide more resources to help subsidize those bodies that will come into our city and benefit from the taxpayers of the city of Pittsburgh. Councilman Cargill?
Just to pile on, you know, you know, the equipment leasing authority, I have Chief Ramano saying, we need new ambulance. We need, Councilman O'Connor and I put in for it, I think, last year, and we didn't get the funding for it. We're delivering their patients. Patients are paying the bills. To me, it's absurd that they should be at least gearing us with a whole new fleet of ambulances. I mean, we are delivering their most precious cargo, the patients and the money that they bring to the table.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to hold? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Close, it will be held one week. That moves us to Bill one eighty-one.
Bill one eighty-one. Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by seller of land between the URA and City of Bridges Community Land Trust or related entity for the seller block fifty-six F, lots three twenty-six, three twenty-six A, three twenty-seven, three thirty, and three thirty-one in the fifteenth ward, Council District Five.
Motion to approve brief discussion. I, this, I'll just say this is in Councilman O'Connor's district. I don't know if he's still there, wants to comment, but I'm enthusiastically supportive myself. I have seen wonderful work from City of Bridges Community Land Trust, which was a spinoff from the Lawrenceville Corporation and did the first sites there, permanently affordable housing for sale. And we are, I think, should be doing more work with permanent affordability and community land trusts and the powers that those bring to the difficult equation that we have of creating more affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh. So I'll just don't know, Councilman Connor, I don't know if you're there, but I believe he's supportive.
Don't see Councilman O'Connor with us, but I will just also add that this did get approved by the URA.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation that exhausts our agenda for today. We do have a number of meeting announcements. This afternoon at one thirty, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill eighty-eight relative to zone change petition for one property located at two thirty-four Ellis Street within the ninth ward. Also this afternoon at two thirty, council will hold an executive session on Bill one sixty-eight. Tomorrow, Thursday, March twenty-fourth at six PM, there will be a public briefing by the reapportionment advisory committee on the proposed reapportionment district maps. Register to speak at this meeting by filling out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or by emailing city clerk's office at PittsburghPA.gov. Next week, council will hold our regular and standard community meetings on Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, and Wednesday, March thirtieth, respectively. Both meetings will be held at ten AM. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on council meeting webpage by nine AM. Good morning, they'll sit meeting. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, twenty-one thirty-eight. Also next week, on Thursday, March thirty-first at six PM, council will hold the first of a series of public hearings on Pittsburgh proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg. So anything further from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Move second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done.